Two motions, I guess. Which one should we take first, Mr. Williams? The amended and restated articles?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approving the amended and restated articles of incorporation of the Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Now, is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. And ayes have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye. Motion to amend the restated articles of incorporation of CIPSA passes. Okay? We'll take the next one, which is a concurrent resolution. Anybody? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the concurrent resolution adopting amended and restated articles of incorporation of the Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. And ayes have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye. Motion to approve the concurrent resolution adopting amended and restated articles of incorporation of CIPSA passes. Thank you very much. Okay? Now, we'll go to the finance report. Mr. Monday, you want to tee that one up for us?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. As you know, local governments are required annually to have a financial audit. The firm Cradle Jones &amp; Alga conducted the city's FY 18 audit, just like they have in the past, but just a different fiscal year this time. Just a reminder, citizens, a fiscal year is run from July 1st of one year to June 30th of the following year. This takes a tremendous amount of staff time and coordination to work with the auditors. A lot of work, a lot of records have to be produced, reports generated. All that has to be coordinated and scheduled with the auditors. And I'd just like to recognize our finance staff and tell them that appreciate all the work that they put into the audit. Tracy Gregory is her interim finance director. She will introduce the audit team with her auditors and provide additional information. And you'll hear the presentation and get to ask questions in a few minutes.
Okay.
So, Ms. Gregory?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Council persons. We are pleased this evening to have Robin Jones, our CPA with Cradle Jones &amp; Alga, to present the independent auditor's report along with the financial statements. And we'll be passing that out here in a second for the City of Franklin's along with the component units, the school board's audit for fiscal year 18. I want to take this moment to thank all the department heads and their staff for all the time and effort they put in to make sure that we got this audit out on time and the audit, the cost transmittal report has been submitted and everything in time, everything's going to be met all the deadlines. And I really appreciate all the effort. I would like to recognize right now the staff for the finance department and the utility staff that was instrumental in making this happen. If you guys could stand, please. They do a great job. And they do a great job all year long. They really make my job so much easier, and I really appreciate all their efforts. Thank you.
And thank y'all for a great job. We appreciate it.
Yeah, so much. Okay, so at this time, Robin and I are going to pass out the financial statements. So, it'll just take us a moment to do that, and then she will make her presentation.
And they're getting worse. It used to be we had a facility that used to make those papers, but not.
I was going to say, she needed one more hand. It's a fine patriot act. It's thick as the Patriot Act. They're getting worse. They're getting worse. Let me show you something in a minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me show you something on this one for example. If I can find it. It's dealing with... The... They're dealing with your... That's it.
Now, to make this doubly confusing. These are targets that just came and go over and again.
Okay. Bypass those.
All right. First of all, I want to thank the council for letting Cradle Jones &amp; Alga do the audit. I want to thank, again, the staff and Tracy and the school board and social services all for being so cooperative and getting us the information that we need to do the audit. It's nice to have a nice place to work and where people try to get along and make things a little easier. Audit's very involved, but people help. The staff has helped a whole lot. First of all, let me look at this. I want to make a comment after the paper. Thanks to governmental accounting standards this year. Y'all's report went from 240... 174 pages to 245 pages. That's a 71-page increase. So, if we were going by weight, we would have gotten a tremendous fee increase this year because it was a pretty substantial increase in the number... the numbers that we had to include in the audit. And it's all due to what we call GASB 75, which means Governmental Accounting Standards Board Number 75, which deals with other post-employment benefits. And most of those benefits were through Virginia Retirement System. So, if y'all... if you look at the table of contents, the second page on your handout, not the main book, but the ones I've highlighted, you'll notice that the schedule on the second page, all those schedules that I've highlighted in orange are all brand-new schedules this year. They were not in the audit last year. So, the audit is not like it was last year. It's very much more comprehensive and has a lot more numbers in it. So, I wanted to explain that, first of all, that your audit is different than last year. Going back to the first page, I highlighted on the certificate of achievement and excellence in financial reporting. We got that... the city got that again this year. So, that's a good thing. Tracy's going to be submitting that shortly for this year. Hopefully, things will be fine this year, and you'll get it again. Independent Auditor's Report, that states that, you know, everything was conducted in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards. That's over on page one. It's on this page right here. It's about four pages over. It's the first letter that's on our letterhead. It says Independent Auditor's Report at the top. And I just want to note certain things on this letter. It says, "We have audited the financial statements, but management is responsible for these financial statements." You know, we did not prepare them. We... They're... They're the city's financial statements. So, we're supposed to mention that in our letter, and we have right here. Several places, I've mentioned that things are free of material misstatement. And you can see it appears different places throughout the report. In all material respects, this means that we do not audit 100% of the transactions of the city. We do things on a materiality basis, and as standards, auditing standards require, we tell y'all that. Other standards that we follow are government auditing standards issued by the Control of the General of the United States. We follow specifications of audits of counties, cities, and towns that issued by the Audit of Public Accounts in the Commonwealth of Virginia and Richmond. So, we're following at least four or five different auditing and accounting standards when we do y'all's audit. But the good news is that we found nothing wrong, and y'all have what we call a clean opinion. So, that's the good news. That's basically what this letter is telling y'all. And if you keep going over to Exhibit 1, it's up at the top right-hand corner. Exhibit 1, I also have highlighted things. Everywhere you see the word OPEB, O-P-E-B, that is that new auditing standard, accounting standard that I mentioned. And all of these OPEB references were not in last year's audit. And so, they're throughout a lot of the audit. And I wanted to note that they were different than last year. If you go on over to Exhibit 3, that's your balance sheet. You'll note that cash is in a strong position. You've got close to $5 million in cash, but total governmental funds and $2.5 million in restricted governmental funds for debt service purposes. Your fund balances are all positive, and it's $8.9 million in total fund balances for the governmental funds. Going over to the next page, Exhibit 4, that I've highlighted, you'll notice your net change in fund balances for the year for total governmental funds was negative $417,000. So, it was not much of a decrease, but it was a slight decrease in your governmental funds during this fiscal year. The next page, Exhibit 5, is your proprietary funds, your water sewer, solid waste, electric, and airport funds. You'll note that they have $4.5 million in cash, and your net position is about $11.5 million for your proprietary funds. That's your funds that are there to make a profit. They operate similar to an N.R. business in, you know, in the regular world. Not in the governmental world. So, they're out there to make a profit technically, but sometimes they don't. So, the next page is Exhibit 6, again, your proprietary funds. $3.5 million was generated and change in net position for the year for all your proprietary funds as a whole. And a lot of that was your electric fund, the $2.1 million. Going on to the capital assets, these are your fixed assets. And you'll just notice highlighted the increase column. It just shows you, you know, where to look to see how much y'all purchased in fixed assets for the year. And that's the next three pages of all your fixed assets. You'll notice that the airport fund had $1.4 million where y'all are doing some construction at the airport. That's the bottom, it's page 45. And that's all your fixed assets. Your long-term obligations, all your debt. The total governmental activities is $16 million in debt for the governmental activities. For your business type or your proprietary funds that we just mentioned, the water sewer, airport, and all, it's close to $3.3 million in debt. So, the total city's debt is around $19.5 million. And that's on page 47. And you'll do y'all that later. And it's just more debt schedules that you can look through, more detail on your debt. On page 50, flipping through the handout, your legal debt margin is at $37 million. That means that legally, the city can borrow up to $37 more million. And that's based on your real estate assessment. The next page is 54 that I've highlighted. So, from page 54 to page 114, and this big book right here, is nothing but VRS pension plan and those VRS OPEB plans. So, that's 60 pages of that handout that y'all got is nothing but related to all these OPEB plans. There are mortality tables, there are rates, and so, that's... feel free to look at those. That verbiage comes straight from Virginia Retirement System. We don't create those notes. VRS gives us all those... the wording for all of that. They pretty much give us all the numbers that go in that. So, we don't calculate those numbers. VRS gives them to us. And that takes up 60 pages in y'all's audit. So, I just want to note that that's what all that is. And then, going on to page 124 in the handout, it's Note 30. We had to restate your net position because of all the OPEB changes that we're talking about. They didn't make it affect your financial statements, your income statement, all in one year. They made us go back and restate your net position from the prior year so that the total effect wouldn't be so substantial because, I mean, we had to put right much... right many liabilities on y'all's books. And instead of hitting it all in one year, they made us restate your net position. So, that's what that Note 30 is about, which OPEB things, how much each one affected your net position for the year. So, that's what that is. Your budget to actual schedules are on page 126, starting on page 126. If you want to see the smaller funds that aren't in the front of the audit, that's on page... on Schedule 1. That's what some of these other little smaller schedules are. Agency funds. Your school board financial statements are starting on page 166 in your audit. 166 and 167 are school board-related statements. Your IDA is on page 169 in the audit. And we issue three reports when we do an audit. One was the Independent Auditor's Report at the front that we've discussed. The next one is on page 204. It's in accordance with government auditing standards, and it's basically an internal control. And it says that we found no instances of material weaknesses when we did the audit. So, no non-compliance was found. And that's what that report says. A third report that we're required to do deals with what they call Uniform Guidance. This has to do with federal awards that you get from the federal government, and they require us to do this report. And again, it mentions materiality here and that management is responsible for your reports. But again, we found no instances of non-compliance in this area either. And that's on pages 206 and 7 in the audit. One of the last schedules in the audit is on page 210. It's called the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. Some people will refer to it as a CIFA. That's the acronym for Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards. This is all the federal money that the city received for fiscal year 18. All of them are listed here on pages 210 through 211. And we're required to select certain programs each year, mainly those that exceed $750,000. And that's on page 213. It shows which programs were selected this year. The Airport Improvement Program and Special Education were selected to audit the federal programs. And that's on page 213. And it's also the last... last piece of paper in the audit. So, again, this recaps your audit for the year. It says that you had an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. That's a way of saying you had a clean opinion. You want it to be unmodified. So, that's a good thing. And then, then it shows that we found no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies were reported. And that's what all the questions going down the side of this report are. And that's basically it. It says that there were no findings and that y'all now qualify as what we call a low-risk auditee because you've been through two years... three years with... well, this is the third year, and you've had two years of no findings prior to this. So, you're now considered what we call a low-risk auditee in the financial area, in the federal award area. And that is basically your audit. Any questions? There was a lot today, Ken.
Yes. In the three-year period, it was the same formula used to give us a clear...
You mean as far as the programs that we selected or...
Yes. For instance, the formula for each audit system.
Well, we do materiality the same way. That's a formula that's given to us by the American Institute of CPAs. We thought... But we rotate the federal programs that we audit. That's required as well. So, we don't always do the same federal program. So, you had findings back, I think, in '15, and in '16 and '17, you did not have any, and this is '18. So, your third year out, you're considered a low-risk auditee because you didn't have findings in '16 and '17.
Okay.
So, that's the way that works.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just help me understand a little bit about the management letter points that you made.
Okay. Yeah, they're on... they're just management improvements that you could do, and they're not required to be in the bound audit. They will go to the Audit of Public Accounts, will get a copy of that letter. It mentions things like a bank reconciliation.
With the school board.
A lot of it concerns the school board side of it. I know cash... the cash needed to be re-reconciled. And just... basically, it was stuff that, you know, we didn't get things on a timely manner to help assist in getting the audit done. We had to ask the things more than once. And fixed asset report was a little bit... had to get that printed two or three times to get things... something that really kind of made sense. But we finally got that straightened out. But it would be nice to have all that, you know, when we come to do the audit instead of continually asking for things to be redone.
Question. Who is responsible for giving you that information?
Well, the school board. See, they're on the RDA system.
Who's RDA?
The RDA, I don't know what that stands for. The city is on the admin system, computer system, and the school board's on the R... what they call RDA system. I don't know what it stands. It's a software company. And they... they're on a little bit different system than the city, which is not uncommon. I do other audits where they're two different systems. But they should be reconciled between each other, you know, to make sure that two systems stay in balance because the city pulls over that information and runs it on their software as well.
So, what I'm asking is, the school board is a collective body, kind of like council?
Right.
Who's responsible?
I would say the finance director over there.
Of the schools?
Yes. The similar... yeah. I would say in getting... that's who my go-to person was.
So, is the school board aware?
Well, they know I asked them several times for all this, yeah.
Are they aware that you weren't receiving?
I have... we sent many emails and stuff, yeah. Back and forth. And we finally... we got it. It's just it would've been nice to have it up, you know, from the beginning.
What is OPB... OPEB liabilities?
They're the OPEB. That's what I was talking about, about the other post-employment benefits. There are group life insurance through VRS.
Got you.
The health insurance credit through VRS. Line of Duty Act through VRS. And then, you've got your VRS pension, but that's not an OPEB. That's the pension. But, you know, that's the main retirement program. And Virginia Local Disability Program. All of those were... y'all participate in all those post-employment benefits. And we had to book a liability for every one of them. And again, VRS gives us those numbers to, you know... and we have to work them into the figures in the audit, but they give us those numbers to... And they base it on the city's percentage share of the whole state of Virginia. But so, we just basically work... put them in the audit. But this was the first year all of those big ones were in here.
I think on these weaknesses...
An accounting standard.
Mr. Monday, have you and the superintendent gotten together with the two finance directors and started to resolve how to reconcile, get these weaknesses worked out?
Mr. Mayor, the superintendent has been responsive to any communications that I have had with her. What the procedure is now that the auditor has presented the management letter to you tomorrow morning, I will communicate a formal letter over to the superintendent. It just says, "Please see the attached management letter." And I will ask the superintendent to make a response to me as to what their improvement plan. And just like Ms. Jones pointed out, a lot of these matters have been received. They were late. And I will allow the superintendent to submit a plan and summarize each... I'm sorry, address each item that's listed here. And once I have that response, I will forward that to you as well. And the staff will continue working with the school system to ensure compliance.
Right. Because none of these weaknesses are hard to fix. It's just a matter of getting there and doing them.
But they're... I mean, they're not that hard.
The... on page 207, highlighted... I just have a little heartburn with the second paragraph. Being aware of the first highlighted line, it says, "We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control over compliance that we consider to be material weakness."
Right.
However, material weaknesses may exist that have not been identified.
Right.
So, I guess my question is, if the auditor can't identify them, they could very well exist and go overlooked.
Right. And that is standard verbiage that our industry puts out that we have to put in here? Because, again, you know, we select things on a sample basis, and again, that's...
So, what is to ensure that our audits are accurate in relation to reality of the funds?
Well, we have... we have audited everything according to auditing standards, and they have set the formulas up so that everything should be found that should be found. But it's just saying that it... you know, some things could happen that we don't pick up on.
What they're saying, Mr. McMorris, is audit taken as a whole is not misrepresenting any of the numbers or the activity of the city. And they take a sample by using material misstatement. And they look at things that are over that material misstatement. If they find something that's that material, they go into more depth on it. If they see something that doesn't reach the materiality, then it's not enough to really worry about. So, they look at it as taken... the audit takes things as a whole, not piecemeal. If she had two years to spend here to look at every transaction, she could give you a definitive answer that absolutely nothing in the city has gone wrong. If we could afford her to stay here for two years to do that.
It's standard language. I guarantee you, if you look at every careful...
It is ball... it's ball of play language that comes down from... It is, it is ball, it's ball of play language that comes down from the...
Comes straight from the...
Yeah, it comes from the...
And you don't have any latitude.
It's a, it's a cover yourself statement is basically what it is.
This is...
It's a great error.
It's a cover. Does anybody have any other questions from Ms. Jones? Not, thank you, Ms. Jones. Thank you and your, your firm for, for a complete and thorough audit.
Did you ask how many trees she killed?
I don't know. Didn't want to get her. Didn't want to get her.
Did this request the senior advisor?
It's a bid. Bring your bid.
Next, we have the old and new business. We have the Southampton Hospital. Do you want to, how do we want to tee that one up? I just want to call on them.
Well, Ms. Marks and Mr. Johnson are coming forward. I will advise the council that Ms. Marks called Mr. Monday and myself for a meeting. Mr. Monday got tied up in traffic and was not able to attend the meeting. So I attended the meeting on behalf of the city and listened to the opportunity that the hospital has before it. It is one of twenty-five hospitals in the state that have put themselves in a position to have an opportunity to increase their cash flow through Medicaid. And so they are here to, it, it requires a few steps taken by city council. There is a resolution that they will ask you to adopt. And it will help them when they go to the General Assembly in 2019 to try to create the pathway to get these additional funds. And so with that brief setup, I'll turn it over to Ms. Marks.
Thank you, Taylor. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here, Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Monday, Mr. Williams. I have with me today Scott Johnson. We're going to speak to you today about adopting a resolution in support of healthcare provider assessment. So I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Scott Johnson.
Good evening, members, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager, Attorney Williams. Humbled to be here. I'm Scott Johnson. I'm from up in Hanover County. You have got a PowerPoint in front of you that I want to walk through briefly just to share with you what our ask is. Sort of getting to the end first, if you flip over to slide two. Our ask is really for your support of a local provider assessment program. And I want to walk you through how that works. Flipping over to slide three, when we talk about healthcare, if somebody is covered by Medicare, as many people are, that's a hundred percent paid by federal dollars. On the other hand, if somebody is covered by Medicaid, that is generally paid half with state dollars. And then in Virginia, we get a fifty-fifty match from the feds. So fifty cents of state dollars, fifty cents of federal dollars. If you flip over to screen four, our governor some years back directed our Medicaid agency, which the acronym is DMAS, Department of Medical Assistance Services, to file a state plan amendment. And our state plan is sort of the rules of the road. It's the highway. It's the map for our Medicaid program to authorize different provider reimbursement formulas. And as Mr. Williams pointed out, every hospital in the state was offered the opportunity to participate in this program. Twenty-five hospitals in the state chose to do so, including Southampton. If you flip over to, to the next screen there, number five, basically what that state plan amendment did was authorizing the use of local monies in order to draw down more Medicaid reimbursement so hospitals like Southampton can continue to give care to Medicaid recipients. And so if you look over on next on screen six, let me just walk you through really some of the details and then I'll give you an example. So what we're asking is that council would pass an ordinance that would be passed at the request of Southampton, which we're making tonight. And that ordinance would collect a local provider assessment. So Southampton would wire to the city its money on a quarterly basis. That would be, that amount of money would be based on how much care Southampton's providing to your Medicaid citizens. The city would then wire the money to Medicaid. Medicaid would draw down the federal match. And then on a quarterly basis, Medicaid would pay Southampton a supplemental payment. Talking to Mr. Williams, there were several things we wanted to clarify. And if you flip to, to screen seven, it's important to note what we're not asking for. We're not asking for any city money. We're not asking for any of your state money. We're not asking you to hire anybody. And we're not asking to do anything to encumber your good credit record that was just discussed on your audit a few minutes ago. Pictures sometimes help me. Maybe it'll help you if you flip over to screen eight. That little example there would show the hospital giving you under this program a dollar. You give the dollar to Medicaid, DMAS on this chart, okay? DMAS takes that dollar and gets the federal match. You see CMS, that's Center for Medicaid Services. That's the federal level. And so now there's, they have two dollars in hand. And if you go below the bottom blue line, what would happen is DMAS on a quarterly basis would make a supplemental payment back to Southampton. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that's, that's the program in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions. And we would respectfully ask your favorable approval of the resolution before you.
Does anybody have any questions from Mr. Johnson?
Two questions, actually, three questions. Why only twenty-five hospitals if it's just a matter of running, running it through us and running back up?
It takes a lot of work to get it going. Some hospitals were not interested in, in taking the time to invest in it. We've been working on this since 2011. And some hospitals says we're not, you know, able to put commitment to it. Other hospitals have done this in other states where they have operations and they see the benefit of it. And so they were more inclined to step forward.
And does, what do you give up by doing this to get extra money?
So basically what the, the hospital here would be giving the contribution to the city. The city would be giving that contribution to Medicaid and you're getting the federal match. So the, the hospital in essence is not giving up anything, but it is getting more money so that it continues to maintain services here and provide treatment to the Medicaid population.
But you had to start the program in 2011 or you weren't able, eligible to get in now?
Correct. So the way the, the state plan amendments work at the federal level is the date that the state plan amendment was filed, in essence, starts the clock. And then it took about five years for the feds to approve it. So this program is only able to be accessed for that five-year period by those twenty-five hospitals that chose to participate. Nobody can jump in now and nobody can go back and get money under this program for a different year.
Okay. Um...
I thought he had three.
The only thing I was going to say is I wish we could figure out how to send a dollar up to federal government and get two dollars back for the city.
So, go ahead.
Okay. Um, Mr. Johnson, the program that was selected for this particular area, why exactly was it selected?
So the, the program of these twenty-five hospitals, we are looking to localities where there's only one hospital as opposed to localities where there may be two or three different hospitals. That's where it works. And so as these twenty-five hospitals looked around the state, there are about twelve jurisdictions that just have one hospital here. Here would be an example. Emporia would be another example.
Well, how will the Medicaid recipients prosper or would it give them an advantage?
So when you look at the operations of the hospital, despite Ms. Mark's good leadership, it's no, no question, you're, you're at a loss when you're caring for Medicaid recipients and even Medicare recipients is extremely tight. And you've got salaries of nurses and hospital staff that are continuing to go up and the cost of doing business. So the hope is that this money comes back to maintain the level of services you have. If there are opportunities to expand, they certainly want to do that. But it's a commitment of this hospital to this community.
Okay. So there, there may or may not be expansion of other programs that the hospital could offer the community.
Right. We don't want to overstate anything. If we can, we will. But we don't want you to sit there and make a decision tonight saying if this money comes back, this new service is going to come. Because, because that's something we can't do and, and we want to make sure we're very transparent with you.
Okay. So basically, the program is geared around the population in this area.
Yes, sir.
For service.
Kim, you want to add anything?
I'll just say that we, we take care of a lot of Medicaid patients. But with Medicaid expanding January first, we expect to take on a lot more Medicaid clientele. Medicaid does not cover our costs at all. This program would help us to be able to provide, provide care to those needing our assistance and help us as a hospital be able to prosper.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Um, I'm, I'm just seeing, at the beginning, Southampton Memorial Hospital puts up a dollar for Medicaid. And, and then ultimately you want the, the federal government to match the dollar that you spent.
Yes, sir.
Comes up to two hundred, two dollars.
Yes, sir.
What is the purpose of making the city the middle person in this when it's going to still be the same two dollars?
Sure. When the, when the federal government approved this state plan amendment, so in other words, our roadmap, if you will, of how Medicare and Medicaid works, they specifically permit localities to help fund Medicaid. And so an option would be to come to the city and say, "City, you take city dollars and send it up. But frankly, we don't think there is a stomach for that. So we're willing to step up to say, we'll try to help ourselves as opposed to trying to get local tax dollars to do it."
Okay. That part, it, it makes sense. But you just, Ms. Marks just said that the cost of the Medicaid people are exceeding the cost of what it costs to provide that service.
Correct.
Now, these funds, tell me how, I'm thinking that it's more funds available because of the new expansion of Medicaid from the state. So there are more funds available to pay for, on behalf of these Medicaid recipients. So how come...
Sure. So of the current Medicaid population, if Ms. Marks sees somebody today and whatever care they get cost her one dollar, she is going to get reimbursed somewhere in the ballpark between sixty-five and seventy cents. The rest is at a loss. If this program is operational, the supplemental funds that would come back to her on a quarterly basis would help offset that loss. That's today's population. Then after January, the state is estimating that we may see north of four-hundred thousand new Virginians that are eligible to get care under Medicaid expansion. And under that expansion, it is still not paid to her at dollar for dollar. It's going to be some amount less than one dollar. And this supplemental program will be of assistance to close that shortfall of that gap.
So at the end of the day, you're asking us to be the fiscal agents...
Yes, sir.
For the hospital to use the pass through.
Yes, sir.
So that we can do it. Not unlike what we have done for the library and other things to take smart beginnings and those to, to use, use a children's center. There's several of them that we, we serve in that capacity. So they can get those matching funds, federal funds, okay? Any other questions?
Might be too much detail, but I see our EMT guy out there. Would this help at all with any of the costs for the ambulatory care and delivery service and all that they need to deal with that?
As long as that emergency room is vibrant and open, that's a shorter trip he's got to take somebody having a heart attack.
So ju, just a shorter trip. Okay.
And better care.
All right. What's the, is there a pleasure of council as far as the resolution?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution of the city council for Franklin to become the fiscal agent, if you will, for the hospital dealing with Medicaid.
Second. We have a motion. And a second. I guess we should read the resolution or can we just do a motion?
I would ask that you read it.
Okay. All right.
Let me do it. Resolution of the city council of the city of Franklin, Virginia, supporting the adoption of an ordinance, all related actions in the Virginia General Assembly and executive branch agencies for the establishment of a local provider assessment of Southampton Memorial Hospital for a supplemental Medicaid payment program. Whereas the city council met on November twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen to consider information and receive an overview of the request of Southampton Memorial Hospital, referred to as SMH, regarding a supplemental Medicaid payment program. Whereas council gave due consideration of the request of SMH and of the information provided by SMH and presented by SMH. Whereas the healthcare services SMH provides to the citizens of the city of Franklin and the surrounding communities are invaluable and promote the general welfare of the citizens and is of the best interest of the city. Now therefore, it be resolved that in consideration of the foregoing in light of the best interest of the city of Franklin and the general welfare of its citizens and city count, the city council fully supports the adoption of an ordinance to establish the local provider assessment on SMH and fully supports the introduction and passage of any and all legislation in the Virginia General Assembly as may be required to implement and operate such program, passed and adopted by city council of the city of Franklin, Virginia, at a regularly scheduled meeting of city council on November twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen, signed by the mayor and by the clerk and then dated.
Okay. Would you put that in the form of, that's in the form of a motion?
That's in the form of a motion, yes, to adopt a resolution.
Okay. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have one other question. What limits do you have that you don't just say, okay, we'll give you fifty million dollars so we can get a hundred million back? Well, there's got to be some...
It, it's two collars, if you will, financial collars. It's number one, the, the amount that the hospital would pay in is based upon the services they are providing to Medicaid patients. And the amount that is eligible to be matched is based upon how much services were provided in that five-year window under the state plan. So it's two, I guess, limitations, if you will, or triggers, if you will.
Okay. Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favors?
Aye.
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 And aye. Resolution passes. Thank you all very much. Good luck with this. All right. Okay. Now we have a resolution to adopt the USDA forms for the police vehicle grant. Who wants to tee that one up?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Franklin, as does many other localities, utilizes grant funds from the USDA. We typically call that the rural development program to offset costs to purchase police vehicles. There is a resolution required by the council to be able to do this. What the resolution does and what we're agreeing to is we will follow the regulations. And basically, if you don't ask the federal government for a match, you don't get the funds. So the staff recommends approval of this resolution numbered twenty-eighteen dash zero-six to authorize such submission and execution of this grant program.
Okay. Anybody want to discuss that one?
To get the match, we got to spend more money on vehicles, correct?
Correct. Yes, sir. It would be vehicles that the city needs to purchase. We just get some help from the federal government.
That is if we decide to purchase, correct?
Yes, sir.
But this grant is saying that we are planning on purchasing it, right?
That's correct.
And once we've got the grant, we're, well, in order to get the grant money, we have to spend the matching funds in order to get the grant money, right?
Yes, sir. We have to spend our dollars to get the match. We have to follow the government.
And applying for this grant says we plan on spending it if the government will match it.
Yes, sir.
And it's not quite a, a, one-for-one. It's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the, uh, grant. We have to put up twenty-one-five for, and this is a fully equipped police vehicle, correct?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for the city manager. We've had some things that come up and we've said it's going to be a really tight budget. I know it's only twenty-one thousand. We try to do this every year. We get a one or two police cars when we get the match. It's worked out well for us. But are we going to be able to make budget?
As far as I know, we would be basically within the constraints of the budget in anything that we do during a fiscal year, including purchasing police equipment.
My, my, my opinion is we're constantly looking at spending, spending, spending. Whether it's for twenty-one thousand dollars for a police vehicle or nine thousand... whether it's for twenty-one thousand dollars for a police vehicle or nine thousand dollars for a generator in case we need it. But we don't have any funds coming in. These are all taxpayers' dollars. When do we say tighten our belts when we don't have to spend? Or just because something's available, oh, we can't pass that up? It's like people going shopping at, at the Black Friday sale just because it's a good deal, and then they can't pay the rent. But I couldn't pass that deal up. So I, I, I got a problem with that.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
Um, my question is, um, a, a little bit different. Have we looked at the aspects of repair, repairing vehicles?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm not exactly sure, you know, what our fleet policies are. You know, I've been here the, the two months. I do know that, uh, the two times that I have toured the police department, the equipment there, including the police vehicles, is in various states of, um, its useful life. I've seen some equipment there that is nice. I've seen equipment there that should've been replaced years ago. And I'm sure the grant funds, I know these programs have their terms and conditions. When you submit your plan, if you tell them you're purchasing new, that's what you have to do. And I know that's the intent of the grant program, is to be able to give police new equipment that's ready for response. And, um, I do know that, uh, your capital improvements plan, big part of that in any government is police vehicles, and you've gotta take care and maintain the fleet. So it's just a matter of, you know, I trust that the management that's been here before at the police department, also the city, has made that analysis and determined whether it's best to repair or replace. But in order to do the grant program, we need the resolution from the local governing body.
If I recall, that analysis was asked for about a year ago, and it was never presented as far as, uh, fleet maintenance and vehicles that are on reserve. It was never presented back to council, just for your information.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, every, every budget season, we go through this discussion, and there's been several folks who have recommended a longer, uh, mile, they go by mileage, which I understand our policy is based on certain mileage you replace the car. And certain folks who have said, "Why don't we lengthen that out?", and we've never made any headway. But I'm really concerned about the budget for this year, so I, I hate going back and, I hate going back and revisiting things that we've already decided in the budget. We pass it with the budget in there, but at the same time, we've had some things to hit us this year that we don't know how they're gonna play out. And so I'm just concerned about the whole budget process with our numbers and, and are we gonna be able to make it to the end? So I'm not sure how I feel about this at that point.
I was just gonna say, we, we just, with a memory, we did just authorize somehow an expenditure of two hundred thousand dollars for a generator. I could see better giving our officers raises than just keep spending on all this equipment.
And let's, let's verify that, just make sure. We do have this in the budget, the twenty-one-five.
As far as the localities match-
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that would be part of a verification process before any purchase order is processed or approved. We would verify that that's in there. Ms. Gregory's still here. She may can tell you if that money specifically is here.
Does that mean we would find it, or it's already been earmarked?
It would have to be in the budget before-
Right.
-we would pull the trigger and order an equipment or any purchase like this.
We would not sign a purchase order unless we had to-
Well, unless we had the money, but is the money currently earmarked for that?
Can, can we table this until next meeting? So then we know if it's already been there taken?
We could certainly ask for it. I don't know what the timeline, how sensitive this is, but we would, if you wanna bring it back, we will.
Right. Is there some way of finding out that report on the vehicle?
We've got Captain Witt here. I mean, when, when does this thing have to be in, Captain Witt?
This resolution is simply allowing you to continue the process. There's no guarantee we can receive your reward, and you may have to receive the reward. The city does not have to accept the reward. This is simply where you adopt your reforms and when you follow their procedures-
Okay.
-in order to continue with the, uh, increase, that, or, uh, grant process. So this is not a reward that has to go without their reform, and their regulations-
Okay. So this resol- this resolution does not obligate us to any, to any funds at all at this, at this point.
I think that's the question I originally asked, so.
Yeah. So I think we're not, we're not obligated in any way. We would have to do our due diligence on it, number one, for the funding. And then there've been years that we've applied for this and haven't received it anyway.
That's a different life.
So, but I do think, uh, it brings up an interesting point. You know, we have, uh, we, we do need to, excuse me, look at the, the fleet management piece of it and see if, if we can do some things and be more creative than what we have. Okay?
And how long would that take? Because Vice Mayor Keaton mentioned perhaps tabling this to-
Well, that was before Captain Witt said that we, we just, we just vote on this, uh, which does not obligate us in any way to any funds, uh, being transferred. It just gives, gives them the opportunity to apply.
Just keeps our name in the hat. That's part of the process.
Okay. All right. Any desired action of council?
I'd like to move to accept the resolution twenty-eighteen dash oh six.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-eighteen dash oh six. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor signify by aye and ayes have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash oh six passes. Thank you.
May I like to render another motion, if I could, please? I'd like to move that we, request of the city manager that we get information on the service records of the fleet vehicle and to reexamine the fleet policy. I won't say within next month, within the next two months.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And that's just to put it on the record, not-
Yeah, I understand.
Not expecting to find anything, but just, just put it on the record.
All right. I have a motion to, uh, have the city manager, interim city manager, provide us with a report within the next two months about the, the fleet maintenance policy and how we're managing our fleet.
And the service records.
And the service records of, of those.
Right.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye and ayes have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
And aye. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay? All right. Next, we have a, a discussion about the agreement with the Cypress Cove Country Club. Uh, have we wanted to tee that one up?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, the council discussed their current agreement with Cypress Cove at your last meeting, if you remember that. The county tonight at its board meeting is considering what they wanna do since it's time to renew. The term is ending. The agreement they are considering this evening is provided, and you can see that this one is a two-party agreement. It will be between the county and also the country club. This is for your discussion and consideration and any direction that you may have, and that information is just provided to you to facilitate that discussion, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, be the pleasure of the council as to where you go forward.
Okay. All right. Any, any discussion on this? We, we do not have to take any action tonight. I just want everybody to understand. We can, we're discussing and seeing what the options may be or if they, and I will remind everybody that we, we did have, uh, funds budgeted for this in our budget plan this year. Uh, I think the, just, and let me, let me make a disclosure here. I serve on the asset board with the country club. I do not serve on the operating board. It's the operating board that's asking for the funds. Uh, all, all I am is on the stockholder side of it, so that's nothing to do with the way they operate. I just wanna make that-
Two different entities.
Two different, two different-
Yeah, but it would still disqualify his vote on this issue because he serves on the board of the Cypress Cove Country Club, particularly the assets.
No, he does not serve on the board of the club. He, he serves on the asset board, which is a different animal from the operating-
Do they work on behalf of the Cypress Cove Country Club?
Well-
The board he serves on, do they work on behalf of the country club?
Certainly, um, by virtue of being, uh, the overseer of the assets, the answer to that question is yes. But I don't see it as a conflict. I don't see it as a conflict.
I've, I've asked Mr. Williams to, to look at it from a conflict standpoint. I, I, listen, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, with, you know, recusing myself and not voting. I mean, but, you know, right now, I just wanted to disclose to everybody so you know where I'm coming from on this thing, uh, or not coming from. But I've just opened it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, there's, um, two considerations that I think we should consider. The first is the vice mayor noticed in the information that we got on the last one that there was a distinction, a difference between the city usage and the county usage, and that there should be some differential that county puts forward versus the city. I don't see that addressed at all.
Well, we, well, we have the opportunity to address that.
That's what I'm saying.
We have the opportunity to address that.
Okay. But it's not in what we have seen here, so we don't wanna just ratify what they've done.
No, and nor would I suggest in any way that we even consider that. I think, you know, if you looked at the, the usage, our usage was, uh, you know, a third of what, maybe even a quarter.
About twenty-five or so.
If you looked at it, uh, you know, they, they reduced theirs. I think the interesting thing is that the, the club itself, uh, the operating board of the club has, uh, addressed this, uh, to raise their fees two dollars and fifty cents to, you know, and to try to help on their end to, kind of a give and take, more of a give and take, but still within a price range that's, uh, I guess, meet, meet, not necessarily profitable, but meets the, uh, the area's cost on, on what golf would be, you know.
The only thing they all sort of remember is that there appears to be, from what I've understood, from the last one as well, a five thousand dollar set amount for golf teams, the city and the county or whomever. So that's also gotta be taken into consideration, I think.
Okay.
As a standard.
Yes. Let me cut across here. Help you finish. Uh, as I raised the question, uh, before the last time, looking at the information where the, um, I think it was, um, that was, um, Southampton Academy and then Southampton, um-
High School.
High School. Thank you. Uh, had more usage than the City of Franklin. And I guess my question is still, do we have anyone that will enhance the program and the growth for the City of Franklin to even match that? Or is someone in place, uh, to even, um, enhance the growth of golf for, um, Franklin High School?
Uh, I talked to Mr. Dennis Sumlin, who's the golf coach there. This year, he had four, four young men who went out to play. Uh, he's looking to have a full team together next year so they can begin to play matches again, and they will use that facility. They used that facility this year. He used it to teach them how to play golf. Most of them didn't, didn't know how to play golf, they just had an interest in it. Uh, he had four individuals. He's hoping to have a full team and to use it, uh, for the golf. And the golf starts in, uh, June or July, I believe. July, August, August, so.
Well, because, well, why I'm raising the question is basically, um, to give you some example, uh, we have a marching high school band that has sixty, um, persons, uh, using instruments. We could have a hundred or a hundred and twenty, but we do not have the instruments for the students to play in the band. So I'm, my thing is, whatever we do, we need to get a bang for our buck, because if we're not using the money there, there are other, there are other places that money could be used. Uh, we have students in, um, the lower grades that are playing in the high school band as well as, uh, in the high school. And my thing is when, uh, uh, our youth want to play in the band, but they can't play because they don't have, the band doesn't have the instruments to provide for them, you know, that's, that's, uh, that's a concern.
Well, let's don't, let's don't do, do our total focus on, uh, on, on high school golf. Uh, you know, we need to look at the, you know, at the whole, the reason we funded this initially was, uh, to, to look at the community asset and try to maintain a community asset. And, you know, it's up, I mean, like I said, you, we can, you know, y'all, y'all can look at it any way you want to, you know, I, I'm, I'm not gonna vote one way or the other.
That's one way to look at it. The other way to look at it, I certainly don't think we should pay as much as the county.
I agree.
It keeps an asset here that helps businesses come in. But it also offers an opportunity for folks that do not belong to the country club or do not belong to a country club, that may go to Suffolk or other places to play, here in the community, to have an, uh, some recreation right here. Maybe they end up joining down the pipe, but it at least gives them an opportunity of those folks that are, say, thirty to seventy-five, let me say seventy-five year olds that still play that have that opportunity. So also look at it that way. But I'm not gonna pay the same amount as the county to do it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, when we initially looked at this, we were going to try it, see how it worked. We tried it. It didn't work well for us, so I don't see why we have any obligation to do it again. This is a private corporation, Cypress Cove Country Club. It's a private business. Yes, it's an asset to the city, but if there were no tire dealership in Franklin, that would be an asset to the city, to have one. But would we help fund them to bring that asset? Private business is a private business. Taking public funds to subsidize a private business is not what our taxpayers pay us to do, particularly when we don't get the bang for the buck. So looking at it is from the perspective of, yeah, well, we just can't pay as much as Southampton. If Southampton wants to pay for it, let Southampton pay for it. But why should we obligate? We just talked about other monies. Twenty-one thousand dollars that we might need to spend on something. But we're not gonna spend thirty thousand this year, but we'll spend fifteen. And fifteen takes us closer to having the twenty-one we need for an asset that is for all of the residents of our city. So I don't see why we need to haggle about redoing a program that didn't work for us the first time. Why can't we say, "Thank you, it was a nice idea, we tried it, it didn't work, let's move on"?
And, and that's certainly an option.
That's certainly an option. Mr. Mayor, two comments? In theory, I agree with Councilman McLamore, but at the same time, the city didn't try. I don't know how many times, me in particular, but other people too, asked, "Where is the plan? Where is the plan?". Everybody heard it from up here, "Where's the plan?". To date, we don't have a plan. So my thought is, until we see a plan, I'm not gonna vote. I, I mean, Parks and Rec need to get together, we need to get Parks and Rec to put a plan together and let us consider it, but if we're not gonna get people, encourage people to go to the club and play golf, we're not gonna be successful again.
Correct.
Well, that was my main point before, who's gonna enhance this? Um, I can see it from both sides, but basically, if we, we must have something in place to get our youth interested in training and playing golf.
Not just the youth, though. It's gotta be the whole community.
It's gotta be the whole community.
Yeah. Oh, you play golf a long time, not just in your youth. Second comment, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, is we do not have this money budgeted, 'cause we didn't budget for it, right?
We did budget.
We budgeted thirty thousand.
I thought we didn't.
No, we did.
Because we didn't know if we were gonna do it.
We did, we put-
We did budget for it? Okay. You wanna make sure we got the money when we're sitting here again?
As a placeholder to this thing.
Yeah. Okay. I thought we didn't.
Well, like I said, you know, this is something for us to noodle over and think about. We see, you know, the county hadn't even, county may decide to do the same thing, you know, just say not.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we end this and move on to something else. The motion is to scrap the city's participation in the golf program. Can I get a second?
Do I have a second?
So nobody wants to scrap.
I would like to add one thing. It's hard for us to sit here and say we can put money somewhere else when we're talking about our police and fire, we can't even give money to them, our employees need races, there's a lot of places money needs to be. I'm going to have to second your motion.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussions? Okay, now we'll call for the questions. All those in favor signify by aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay. And I abstain, because I'm not going to vote on these things. Based on that, it's a tie at this point in time, so the motion does not pass.
I will say that I'm not, couldn't always do it that way, though.
No.
When it comes back.
I think we've asked for the information, we need to get the information.
There was no support last year.
All right. Next on the agenda is the ordinance amendment authorizing an increase for the school board's salary. Mr. Williams, you want to tee that one up for us, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we last met, there was a full discussion by council as to the request from the school division to increase the level of compensation for the chair of the school board and for the members of the school board. You may recall that our charter has a provision that deals with the salaries of the chair and the members. The charter says the mayor, excuse me, the chairman of the school board can be paid up to $5,000. The members of the school board can be paid up to $4,000. I believe I reported that the present salary is something in the neighborhood of $4,000 for the chair and $2,200, I think, for the members of the school board. There is a city ordinance that's different from the city charter that sets those salaries, not at the limit that is allowed under the charter, but at the limit that I just mentioned, the $4,000 and the $2,000. And so what the council voted on last meeting was to say yes, that the salaries could be increased. So what I have prepared tonight is actually an amendment to ordinance section 2-73 that actually raises the ordinance level up to the $5,000 and the $4,000 that is set forth in the charter. And so I think if I understood the approach taken by council at the last meeting, we give the school board money to spend for education, and they have the ability to set their own salaries. And if they choose to increase the salaries, take funds for education, increase their own personal salaries, then that was their business. And so I just increased the ordinance salary to equal the charter salary, which then leaves the burden on the school board members to decide how much the chair is going to be paid and how much the school board members is going to be paid. So it's apples to apples at this point. Right now, it would be apples to apples if this amendment is adopted.
Okay. Does everybody understand what we're talking about here?
Yes.
It's just getting, I guess, the two documents lined up so they can do what we voted on doing at the last meeting, okay? I think you sent us, we have a copy of the motion in our packet.
Mr. Mayor, I move for adopt. Were you going to say something?
No.
No.
No, I thought you were going to read the motion off the thing.
Do we need to read the whole thing, or can I just say we're going to adopt it as presented? If you want me to read it, I'll read it.
I would prefer that you read it.
Okay. I move, whereas the Franklin City Charter, section 12.04, provides the council shall fix the compensation of the members of the Franklin City School Board, but such amount shall not exceed the sum of $4,000 per school board member, and shall fix the compensation of the chairman of the Franklin City School Board, but such amount shall not exceed the sum of $5,000. And whereas Franklin City Code, section 2-73, provides the salary of the chairman of the school board shall be $4,050, and the salary of the members of the school board shall be $2,560. Now, therefore, be it resolved that City Code, section 2-73, annual salaries of members of school boards shall be amended to the following. Section 2.2-73, annual salaries of members of school boards, A, pursuant to City of Franklin Charter, section 12.04, the salary of the chairman of the school board shall be $5,000, and the salary of the members of the school board shall be $4,000. Above salaries shall be paid in equal monthly installments.
Okay. I have a motion and I have a second. While Mr. Johnson, any discussion?
Yes. When this was initially brought up, I had an issue with it. I said that the school board hadn't showed consistent growth enough to award this new board with salary increases. It was just brought to my attention very recently, one of the things that they touted was that we had achieved accreditation for all the schools. I just found out that the only reason that we achieved accreditation was because the state has lowered its requirements. In fact, the test scores that we received were lower than the previous test scores under Dr. Bell. But they were high enough to be accredited because the state lowered the requirements for the accreditation. So the school board hasn't really done much to improve our schools, and have only been there two years, when there were people who struggled in our, working with our school board for much more than two years, and they never got a salary increase. So I know this body is going to grant it, because they give most everything people are asked for, but I do want it to be made aware that the circumstances were the accreditation came as a result of the state lowering the requirements, not as a result of our school, students increasing as a result of our school board's work. So therefore, since they haven't done anything to improve our students, I don't see why this council is approving more money, but I understand what's going on.
Well, unfortunately, we've already approved.
Yes.
All we're doing now is approving a charter change to make order change to line up with the charter.
Be consistent with the charter and consistent with what council said at the last meeting.
Right, okay. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of said motion signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 And aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now at the DFA presentation regarding possible amendments to the agreement. Do you want to key that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, there is a current agreement with the Downtown Franklin Association that has been in effect since 2002, and that is provided in your council agenda packet this evening. Mr. Howell is here with you, and he wants to discuss a few things with you. He wants to talk about, first of all, the need to amend the letter of agreement and why that is necessary. He will also present and discuss with you briefly a draft letter of agreement. And then he also wants to solicit your feedback, because at a later council meeting, Mr. Howell will be back before you with a letter of agreement for you to consider that encompasses your feedback. And Mr. Howell is here to talk about those things with you this evening. And again, no action is required this evening, other than to listen and then give any input that you have, and then he'll be back with you soon.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Rabel, Vice Mayor Cheatham, Distinguished Counsel, interim manager Monday, Attorney Williams. Thank you very much for that intro. In a nutshell, I have hard copies, too, if you want me to distribute them at some point.
Do you want a hard copy now, or you want to wait and get them later?
We'll wait.
We'll just wait.
As Mr. Monday mentioned, this agreement dates back to 2002, and it's kind of, it's served its purpose. Main Street itself is a national, as well as a state program. The City of Franklin is actually one of the original four in the state of Virginia that was accredited for this program. And National Main Street nationwide has gone through what they call a refresher program. We're doing things good, but maybe it's time, because we've been doing it such a long time, to see if there's better ways of doing what we do. And part of that means the four-point approach, which is what we use for a model nationwide and statewide, it deals more with transformation strategies. You were this at one time, you're this currently, what do you want to be? The existing agreement has a lot of what should the DFA do, what should the city do, there's a lot of in-kind things to help the city go forward. But there's not a lot of metrics in it. What are the expectations? For most of you that don't know, I came from big business and small business, so city government is similar, downtown should be similar, we need to run our operations as a business. And to do that, you need visions, mission statements, and we've gone through all of those processes. We've adopted new strategies to get where we want to go. And going forward, we think, we feel that it's a good time, and so does our state representatives that are our resources to help us statewide as well, feel that it's kind of time to relook at these agreements. Most of it, when you read over the agreement, is very similar as a boilerplate. One thing I've done that you'll notice, and when I hand you the hard copies, is that there's a boilerplate part that kind of says the basic structure of the agreement. And then there's an attachment that is all about metrics. What are the expectations? It's hard to achieve goals and what you want to do if there's no expectations and no metrics put on it. And that's what the addendum is that's attached to the actual boilerplate program. So what I'd like, when you review it, and I definitely want your input, whether it's now, between now and the next time we have to meet, feel free to contact me, the attachment is all about metrics, about what the expectations are. And what we've tried to do is look at what falls in line, not only with the Downtown Franklin Association's mission and our vision, but what the city's mission and visions are. And you want them to be kind of going in the same direction. So the way this new format is dealt, is the boilerplate could be something that could exist year to year with little or no edits. And what you would do annually to make sure things are going the way city council wants it, as well as the DFA and all the people we benefit from it, is that you can amend the attachment, the metrics, the expectations, year to year. So you're not redoing the whole program, you're just redoing what changes from year to year as far as situations. Our community changes, there's no doubt. We've got great things going on, there's a lot of motivation going on downtown, as well as citywide. And I'm a firm believer, goodies bring goodies. We started the startup program, for example, and over two rounds of that, we've not only put six brand-new businesses in business for those, there's been ten others that have gone into business besides that, just in the downtown. So those are the type of programs that, when you invest money in it, you get money back, because the more we invest in our community downtown, every new business brings new revenue into our city, through sales tax, through improvements, through people doing jobs. We run grant programs, property owners are upgrading their properties, our downtown is looking better, just painting them, our murals, all of this is money that's been invested and reinvested in our community. And that's one of the main reasons we're seeking to look to revise the program, to continue to look at what's invested in the DFA versus what the outcomes that we expect, and are we doing it? Just to throw some numbers out, bottom line is, the city's line item has varied over the years between $50,000 and $50,000. And the special taxes varied about the same, 50 to 55. So for a $110,000 investment, the return on that investment, the DFA budget has ranged anywhere from $250,000 to $325,000 in the last 10 years. So we've made, generated money that has gone back into our community based on that. So I just, but it's good to have the numbers in front of you and know what's expected of you, and make sure that we all are in agreement, that's what's best for our community. The Downtown Franklin Association is really an extension of the city as a whole. I will hand these out, or if you have any questions about what we're trying to do, I'm open for any thoughts or questions. I definitely value your input, because when you read what we've put down on there, I want it to fall in line with what your visions are of what is needed down there as well.
Thank you. And it may behoove us to have a work session around this and provide you with collective feedback as opposed to single feedback, is kind of what I'm thinking. I don't know, I mean, does that seem to...
Yes, I agree with it, because basically, we just get one side of the information.
We will, we will do that, Dan. I think that would be better to get it all that way at one time.
I'm all open for that, yes.
As opposed to seven different times, seven different ways. So we will poll council to find a date where we can find an agreeable date to have a work session to do that, if everybody's in agreement, if they think that's a good idea. Since it says we'll do that.
And this isn't unique to Franklin. A lot of the resources we used when I met with Mr. Monday and Mr. Rabel, Mayor Rabel, they have provided us with documents from other cities similar in nature to us, and that's what we kind of used to make sure ours kind of helped us be successful as well. It's all about us being successful. It's part of our continuous improvement plans in downtown.
Okay. Anybody? Thank you, thank you, Dan.
This is the old agreement, this is the boilerplate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, city manager report, Mr. Monday.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the first city manager's report is one that you requested about the Edmonds software update. Staff has met numerous times to prepare for an eventual meeting with Edmonds. That meeting with Edmonds was held on November 14th, when Edmonds brought four members of their team down to meet with the city staff. The city staff in attendance that day, we called our project management team, that consists of our commissioner of the revenue, our treasurer, the city manager, city attorney, the interim finance director, and our IT director. And what our purpose was, when Edmonds come down to meet with us, was talk about the successes we've had, the parts of the modules that have been successfully implemented, and any tweaks or adjustments that need to be made to them, but also to talk about the parts of the programs that have not been implemented at all, and to develop a timeline for that. The meeting lasted probably five hours, it was, I felt, very productive. The Edmonds staff, they were interactive, they've done some work, since they were here with us last, when this project started several years ago. Real examples were given of the parts that we were missing, some of the reports that our staff needed. And the city designated Steve Newsom, our IT director, as our lead in this project going forward. And what I asked Mr. Newsom to do was come before you this evening and talk a little bit about the parts that are still to be implemented, some of the interactions he's had with Edmonds since that meeting, and also... had with Edmunds since that meeting, and also give you an indication of a timeline of when these parts might be completed. And then it's one last thing that we need to get some input and some direction from, on you. One of the things that we know that you want to implement is to where a citizen will be able to go to the city website, and be able to interact and do what's called an online bill pay. I've been through this exercise before, and one of the hardest aspects, one of the hardest conversations of that component, is to determine who's going to pay that convenience fee. And we all know that when you walk into a tire store, and you decide to purchase your tires, and you pull out plastic, somebody's paying that fee. And the business usually knows that a large part of the population is going to pay by plastic. And I'm just telling you that if you do that with your public utilities, with your taxes and so forth, that's going to affect the amount of revenue that you as a city collect. If you absorb the fee, you're going to collect less money. If you pass that on to the customer, you're going to hear from your customers, hey, you charging me to use this. That's something that you have to have a frank discussion about. But we need direction from you, because the Edmunds team told us that it would take about six to eight weeks, once they know how you want to handle that aspect, to build a program accordingly. So with no further ado, we let Mr. Newsom talk with you a little bit about the parts that are outstanding, what he hears about when this project may be completed, and then we do need to have the conversation about who's paying those convenience fees. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my introductory remarks.
Like Mr. Monday stated, we had a meeting, and I'll show you just real quick, our meeting agenda, some of the things we went over. One of the things you see is we've broken out Commissioner Revenue and Treasurer's Office, different modules. Well, we found out that that's all called the tax module. So, even though it's broken out here in our agenda, it's all one module, so, just for clarification. We talked about online payments, certifications, historical data, you know, all the things that are listed here, went through them all separately, had a very good discussion on all of them. Got good answers, got good responses from Edmunds on all of those topics. The, I got this today at 5:35. This is supposed to be their plan moving forward, it's a timeline. I won't go through each of these items, I'll just hit the highlights. The real estate data, the process going forward, let me back up a second, the process going forward is, they will get the data back to us, we will review it, and we will certify that the data is accurate. And then we'll start testing, and certify that the testing actually works, and then we'll go live from there. So, the timeline for the real estate is, as you can see here, we'll get the data December the 10th, we'll have four weeks to certify and test it. We will get the personal property data January the 7th, so that's three days in between. And then we'll certify and test that, we'll have four weeks for that. That will be, should be done by February the 1st. And then the rest of that module, which would include all your business licensing, your meals, tax laws, and taxes, all the taxes, we would get February the 15th, and certify that March the 4th. And then, the whip program, which is the online payment part of it, if we get some direction on how to handle the credit card charges, we will get that paperwork in January 16th. And by, between January 16th and the first part of March, that should be set up, and then we have a go-live date of March the 13th. So what will happen is, and let me look at the calendar real quick. March the 8th, we'll shut down taking payments on from the AS400 side, pull a final, do a data, a final data pool from the AS400. And then it will take two days, that'll be Monday and Tuesday, to get all of that transactional data uploaded into the Edmunds system, and then we'll go live on the 13th, which is their end date. So that is the plan as of 5:30, 6:00 today. Any questions on any of that?
Yeah, on the online payments, he said he wants us to discuss, do we want to have the customer pay the charge, or are we going to absorb the charge?
Correct.
I could very well see council making that decision quicker than January.
And once that decision is made, we'll start the paperwork process?
So, if that decision, say for instance, in a perfect world, we all agree that we think that fee, which is about $2, $2.50, something like, is that right?
Mr. Mayor, it varies by source. If you use American Express, or MasterCard, or Visa, they all have different fees.
Okay, $2, $3, or is it as much as $5? If we agree to pass that charge on to the customer for that convenience, we all agree, aye, 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 then why, here we are in November, why is it going to take you till January before you can start putting that into effect?
Well, January, the January date was allowing for the Thanksgiving holiday, the Christmas holiday, vacations, all of that to be done, to get through all of the vacations between now and Christmas, and then we will start the paperwork process. If you say, in the next five minutes, which direction you want to take, then we can go and start that paperwork process. That was, it was allowing, you know, a little bit of leeway for you to have the discussion...
I'm just thinking, because we come out of implementation by March, which is almost four months from now. So, I don't see why we're gonna, you know, if we can avoid having the citizens wait another four months before we can accept online payments, why we should have four months as a target?
The only payments we could do right now would be the utilities, that would be the only payments we could do as of today. We wouldn't be able to do, we won't be able to do any additional payments until we go live in March.
But they could pay their utility bills on, theoretically.
Mr. Mayor, we just didn't want to dump it on you this evening, and, you know, ask for a decision today, we thought you might want to have time to think about it. If you give us the answer sooner, it's not going to speed the process up to get us where we need to go with the end product. It's not going to, you know, hold us up, or speed it up either way, depending on, as long as you meet his timeline.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to make sure we're doing our due diligence on this, because if we're looking at a cost internally, that could be up in hundreds of thousands of dollars, $100,000 or so that we had to cover, I mean, that, we can't afford that. By the same token, you know, do you, you know, do you come up with some type of formula that splits the cost? I don't know, I mean, I, you know, you call it a convenience fee, I mean, I pay convenience fees for some other places, and, you know, I never fully understood why I had to pay an extra $3 or $4, just to do, use my credit card, but I'd, but I'd understand the implication that it makes to the municipality, if you have that many transactions and you get them. You know, it's, we're, we certainly can't, like in a business, we can't include that in our rates.
No, no. Every card has different fees, as you said, so you have to decide, are you going to accept all cards? Is there options? What are we going to do? And it's going to have to be evaluated.
It's got to be evaluated, and I think we need some, we need some information.
Right.
I would, quite frankly, I would like to see it come from the team, you know, let them do, I mean, they're the ones, let them do an analysis, share that analysis with us, and make a recommendation on whether they think we ought to, we ought to absorb it, or whether the customer should pay, you know.
We also need to know what form of payments are used now, what the percentages are of each kind of payment, what kind of transactions...
They'll give them time to gather that data, yeah.
Including lowering the receivables, which I don't think it will do.
Well, it's, it depends, I guess, on the credit card company, on their reimbursement back to you. So, that's, you know, that's a, that's a concern. I mean, it's, it's more than just making a decision, charge them or don't, don't charge them. You got to have the data behind you to make sure that you're making the right decision on all of this.
I thought that's the question that you wanted answered.
He was, he was bringing it up to let us know that we need to make a decision on that. Or we need to collectively, and when I say collectively, that would be staff and us, make a decision on that.
But basically, we're not prepared this evening to make any type of decision, because basically, without the proper data, nothing can be done.
I just know that I've sat up here over eight years, and I've seen a lot of things, where we needed more information before we made decisions, and we made decisions.
Well, I'm not going to make, I'm not going to vote on anything I don't know about.
And I just think that, I know, every time I go pay my bill, I ask, is there going to be a fee for using my card? And I really don't want to pay that fee, to be honest with you. But then again, I don't want to continue to deny the citizen the convenience of being able to pay their bills online. That's, that's the state of current technology. So while we get, gather the data, which, I mean, I'm not opposed to that, but, and I think it is something needs to be taken into consideration. But I just think to set a timeline so far out, we're already looking at four months before implementation. So I just think that, when it comes to making convenience for our citizens, we should be as expeditious as we are on other things. A few weeks ago, or a few meetings ago, we made a decision to move forward on the Social Services building. The next meeting, it was done, they had taken care of it, because we made the decision to move forward. And I said, we need to check the prices before we move forward, but y'all said move. So all I'm saying is just to, to look at that, I just don't see why, even if we amend the agenda, go in the closed session and discuss how these details that you want to talk about, we still need input. But my understanding from Mr. Monday was, they needed to know who we were going, who was going to pay for this. And that question, I don't think is as difficult. I do agree with the mayor in regards to, are we going to split a cost, that's something that could be talked about. But I don't think the city should absorb all of those convenience costs, period. No, because it's convenience to the people, and it costs, they have to pay for it. I don't like raising fees on people.
The fee for paying online would be more than the fee for coming into the office on transaction, am I correct?
I don't know the answer to that.
I do know if you call my store and pay over the phone, rather than coming in and putting it in my terminal, it is a higher percentage fee.
I'm not sure what the answer is.
You might want to look into it. You might want to know that.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the kind of stuff we'd need to know, you know, and, you know...
It's a quarter of a percent difference, for every way it's paid. They've got ways of making their money.
Yeah. And I don't think we're going to find no way, even if it's a dime, a dime a transaction...
Paying a dime.
$10. We're not going to absorb...
It's several thousand dollars.
Right, that's what I'm saying, even if it breaks down per transaction, to $10 or a dollar per transaction. I don't think the city is going to be willing to absorb that cost.
But you don't want it to be just thrown out a number to where it's going to be a profit for the city, it should be a wash.
It's a wash.
But you don't know what that wash should be until everything's present, so...
I think that's where we are.
I'm definitely surprised.
Thank you, and, listen, I appreciate the fact that we have finally got a date on when this is going to be done and completed. It's good to see that we've got a project plan in place, and I would encourage, I hope y'all are probably, I didn't look at it very closely, but I'm sure y'all are meeting every week to 10 days, and, or two weeks, and...
We have met a lot.
But I think we've got to stay on top of this, we need, if we're going to tell the citizens that we're looking for a 13th of March implementation, we need to be ready on the 13th of March. And if we're not going to be ready, we need to make that call sooner than later. We don't need to wait till the 10th and say, oh, sorry.
It'll be next one.
Yeah, I mean, you know...
We'll be pushing.
It's impressive to see more accomplished in six or eight weeks than we have the last 16 months.
And I appreciate the fact that y'all are getting together and doing it, and thanks for pushing.
Would anybody like a copy of this timeframe, timeline?
Yes.
Yeah, we can send it electronically, it'd be fine.
I think it should be in the agenda packet every single time we have a meeting.
Yeah. And what's complete, because it's got the things on there, where's the status, it's got the status, so we need, you know, and I believe that we should receive at least monthly updates on where we are with the final implementation.
Isn't that a part of that thing that we put together, with the progress reports?
Yeah, but that one's fallen.
And this is a priority one?
But that's fallen a little bit to the wayside at this time. We're worrying more on a day-to-day at this point, so...
What are we going to request to get that information back, as far as the fees and stuff?
Come with Mr. Monday here.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a suggestion, Mr. Newsom is going to be out of town next week for some training that he's got to attend, he's a project manager. And remember, your next meeting and your last regular meeting is December 10th. What I would propose is to allow my staff to do a few things for you. What they would do is, look and see what the fees are of those cards, put that on a handout for you. I will also have my staff contact a locality that I know that implemented this not too long ago, to find out how they handled it. And I could tell you, the discussion was pretty difficult, the hardest part was guessing how many people would pay by credit card. And then you have to budget for that, because if the city pays for it, it's going to reduce the amount that you're going to collect. And that's going to be a fiscal impact. Then do you raise your rates, if you're talking about a utility, to spread the cost to people that don't have the convenience fee? But I want my staff to talk to a locality that's been through those headaches, and to talk a little bit about pros and cons of each way. And what I would propose is, we send that to you by email, and then we'll be ready to discuss it first of the year when we have our next meeting.
In January?
Yes.
Either that, or if we need to, we could combine it with a work session and do it, you know, depending on when you get the information. We will, we need to be flexible. We need to be flexible enough to have some work sessions to...
We've got a lot of them coming up.
We got a lot of, I mean, we got the thing with DFA, I mean, you know, it may work that we've got the data at that point in time, we can look at.
It could work that way, yes. We'll give you more information.
Okay. There's a couple of localities around here that have already done, gone through this process, so, doesn't Iowa do it that way?
Probably most of them in our area do it that way.
They do online payments?
Maybe for their taxes and stuff, I don't know if they're, also for utilities.
Well, I don't know, I don't...
I don't know what utilities they have, but...
And they would have to concentrate with people who have utility companies as a leader to cover that.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this, our treasurer could not be with us this evening, she has a family member in the hospital, and she said that she was going to try her best to make it back, and if she's not here, to let you know that she wanted to come, but her priorities, of course, are other places.
We understand that, yeah, no problem. Thanks for letting us know that.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve, thank you, Steve. All right, next we continue with your report, Mr. Monday.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the open positions is also consuming a lot of staff time, because when we put these solicitations out and people respond, we have to put our processes in place, but that means it's working. Just want to walk down the list and tell you where we are on the positions, for your sake, and those that are watching as well. For the City Manager, the preliminary review of applications occurs this week, as in day after tomorrow, November 28th. At that point in time, the staff will collect everybody that has responded, their cover letter, their resume, their city application. Those will be copied for you, and then those will be hand-delivered to you Thursday, the following day, or you can stop by and pick them up, however you want to prefer, but they will be ready for you to start reviewing... Or you can stop by and pick them up, however you wanna prefer, but they will be ready for you to start reviewing as early as Thursday. And as you know, you have a special meeting, a closed session scheduled for the following week, where you will come together as a council and determine who you wanna interview, and a little bit more about defining your process, so you'll be ready for the interviews, which come up in early to mid-December. So that process is going along, um, we got candidates sent material in today, I know they're steadily coming in. The human resources manager, we've done two rounds of interviews on those. We interviewed two candidates the first day. We interviewed another candidate another day that could not come to the first set of interviews. Uh, the position has been offered to someone. Uh, that person was offered the position last week, right before the Thanksgiving break, while I was on vacation, Thanksgiving Eve. The person called me and asked some follow-up questions that I thought were very relevant. Additional information was given to the candidate, who is supposed to let me know a final answer tomorrow, but seems very interested in the position. And hopefully, we'll have an announcement soon on that, but I'll keep you posted.
Before you leave, that's human resource?
Yes, sir.
Before you leave, that, is that for joint, the city and the county?
Yes, sir.
So it was determined we are definitely sharing.
Yes, that's the way it was set up when I got it, and it would be a shared position, yes, sir, Mr. McLemore. The parks and recreation director, the gates are open, believe me on this one. No telling how many responses that we've gotten on that just in the last couple of days. Uh, you putting up twenty-five, twenty-five people have expressed interest in that already, if it just went out last week. They are really rolling in. When all this material comes in, it's gotta be screened and printed and prioritized and everything. So you can imagine with all these positions that we have open, what we're going through without an HR director who would normally handle these tasks. So anyone that's interested, that closes out on December fourteenth. Police chief, I'm working with a panel. There will be an interview panel consisting of police chiefs. They will be helping screen the applicants on that. The candidates were just recently selected on the ones that we thought met the criteria that was closely published, as to what the minimum qualifications would be and the preferred qualifications. So we're in the process now of notifying those candidates of when the interviews will be. And I said when I put the ad out, that they will go through a vigorous screening process, and they will. Uh, the process will consist of other components, other than just an interview. And I can't publicly, uh, neither will I discuss publicly what that process will be, other than with the candidates, and I will be glad to discuss it with you individually. I don't think we should do that publicly. I don't want them to be so prepared for the process. I do need a decision from you. Uh, remember that I told you that, that I know that you have to approve whoever I recommend for that position. And I want a council member to be a part of the process, to see, see how we screen them. I want them to be present at all the screening that I mentioned, so it's fully transparent, so that when I come back to you with a recommendation, one of you has seen the process and you understand it as well. And I do need a decision from you this evening. And whoever that representative is, needs to be available during the day, because that's when my chiefs are available, that's gonna help me interview these candidates and everything. And then finally, the other two positions that we have open would be the finance director and the fire chief. And, uh, right now, we have interim people in those positions, and I'm tapped out on my capacity. I cannot handle any more recruitment of positions right now, until we get those filled. And then, at the right time, either I or my successor can deal with those. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll pause there if you have any questions for me.
Let me see, am I having questions? We, I mean, you've given us a task here, we need to, to give you a name, uh, of, of someone to, to serve. I would suggest, based on what you've just said, is it, is it any, does it make any sense to have an alternate also?
I think that's a great idea, in the event something happens.
If something happens to, and somebody can't, but I, but you know, you want whoever's gonna do it to, to, to be, be a part of the whole process. I mean, that's why I wonder if we have an alternate, whether that person could get caught up quickly enough, but anyway, I mean, that's.
Well, Mr. Mayor, when he first brought this up, I asked for, to do that position, and the reasons being is being one of the three senior council members, uh, also being a representative of the majority of the city's population, and, um, no one else had expressed an interest at that time to do it. So I made it clear at the end, since I'm not on, uh, several other committees, and I am available in the daytime, thought I met those criteria. And, um, it's up to my colleagues, uh, being able to do it.
Mr. Mayor, question?
Does this person observe, or does this person participate?
The council member, Mr. Burgess, the council member would observe the same as what my role would be in certain parts of the interview. I would be a little more active than the council member, the council member would be there as an observer.
Okay, does anybody? I think Mr. McLemore nominated himself.
Yeah, pretty much.
Does anybody else have an interest or, uh, a willingness to do it?
We'll have to exclude myself, 'cause I'm never here.
Yeah, I'm not available during the day.
I'm not available.
You're right.
Well, I am available during the day, but, you know, that's.
You're not available.
I'm not available.
That's up to you.
I mean, I could be, but I mean, y'all, you know, whatever, whatever y'all would like to do, we just need to make sure we have, uh, have some representation that, that, uh, is gonna represent the city in a very positive and, uh, encouraging way, because, you know, this is a serious, serious piece, we certainly don't wanna.
Yes, it is.
You know? So.
My person would like to see the mayor there, that's just my brothers.
I agree with that.
Well, he's hired people that in HR, and there's a few things about him. He's not a senior member, he's the mayor.
At large.
And he sits on almost everything.
Mr. Mayor.
And he doesn't represent sixty-five percent of the population. He represents all of us.
Mr. Mayor?
He represents everybody.
I, I do agree that, uh, Mr. McLemore doesn't have any other responsibility, and I, I'm fine with letting him sit.
Okay.
As an observer.
You're in motion.
I mean, you. Mr. Mayor, I'd be glad to, I, I move that the, uh, mayor and councilman, uh, Mayor Rabel and Councilman McLemore be the council, uh, representatives to the committee as observers.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion.
Is it two, or is it one?
He, we're.
Well, how is the alternate work? If the primary can't be there?
We probably need to do one at the primary, one at the.
Well, what's the, what's the distinction? Are they both gonna be there, or would one? Uh, you, you, there's no way you can have one come in and then try to catch up, but I think they both have to be there, so we're really looking at two.
But we can have two, can't, and not be a, not be a meeting, right?
Not be a council meeting, they had a third person.
Yeah, well, that's good.
All right, okay, well.
It, it is observed, correct?
Yeah, right.
So both of you could do it.
Yeah, that's what he just clarified, and it doesn't qualify as a meeting, so we've got a motion that, uh.
And it's clear, we don't participate, we just observe.
Observe.
That's what I understand.
Okay, we second.
I have a motion, and I have a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 I guess we should abstain, but, uh. But we, we got enough votes.
You got enough.
That motion carries, thank you. Just let us know what the schedule is, and we will, and how you'd like for us to.
Please, uh, Mr. Mayor and Mr. McLemore see me right after the meeting, and, uh, I'll let you know when.
Okay.
Since we have determined that. Thank you so much, I appreciate you doing that.
Okay, we now have a disposal of, uh, public property, uh, who's got that one? You, that's, that's yours, still in your report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, Chief Hardison is retiring and requested to purchase his city-issued laptop computer. Six estimates were obtained, and the average of the probable value of that equipment was averaged out to be four hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-three cents. The chief is willing to purchase that computer for that amount. At your last council meeting, the council wanted to ensure that the hard drive on that device could be cleared off, to remove any sensitive data. The deputy chief and also our IT director have both determined, based upon past history of computers, talking to other police departments and their own knowledge of computers, which is, uh, much more than mine, that that computer can be successfully cleaned, it is not connected to the city server now, so you don't have to worry about that as well. And the chief is willing to buy it for a value that's probably more than you would get out of it if you sold it at public surplus. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, that would require a motion for you to authorize Chief Hardison to purchase his department-issued laptop for four hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-three cents, if it be your pleasure.
And we, we, we've got a guarantee, as best we can, that that, that there will be no data on there, it will be a dumb box at that point in time.
Mr. Mayor, I sort of move that, um, we, um, give the chief, um, the computer for, not give, but, um, allow him to purchase the computer at, um, the given amount, four hundred.
Fifty dollars and fifty-three cents. Okay, I have a motion, do I have a? I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah. If it's, if everything can be wiped off of this computer, then why is it, why is he willing to pay above-average cost? As you said, retail co, uh, wholesale cost, or, why does he want this computer so bad if it's gonna be a stripped, empty computer?
I don't know.
Could somebody answer why?
Memory keepsake, how about that?
He got his gun for it. I, I think, I think personally, it's city property, and it needs to stay with the city, and the next chief can make that decision. But to give away something like that to a.
Not giving it, he's selling it.
Well, I mean, even, even to sell it, that, that could have, potentially have very sensitive information on it. And I just think it should stay for the next chief. Now, if there's nothing on there, why does he want it? Who in this, who else works in the city would want to pay above-average rates for a computer that was wiped completely clean?
I, I think they said he was paying average rate.
Average rate.
Not above, but average. We have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion?
Call for a question? I guess the only question, the only thing I have is I've, I have, I, I am not an IT person, and I do not mean to insult our IT director, 'cause I have great faith. But I've never heard of a factory reset destroying the data that's on a computer. There've been a lot of stuff done to computers that, that people have been able to resurrect the data. That's my only fear, but I don't really have a problem with selling him the computer for the price, as long as our people are assured, have assured us that there is no data on the, on the device.
I think, I think I just, I'm trying, yes, sir.
I mean, if our IT people can, can put in a statement that it's clear, and it's okay, that's one thing, that's not on us. If he wants to buy the computer, I got no problem with him buying the computer. But, I mean, somebody needs to sign off on it.
Well, I think we need some assurances that it has been cleared, it has been cleaned, and that.
No problem.
Some kind of guarantee.
Didn't it say in the note? It says right there in the note, it's already.
Says that the above-registered member with the deputy chief in IT concur that appropriate steps can be taken, not hands-mate taken.
Yeah, we need to, we need to, we'd have an after thing that's, that's.
I mean, I'm sure when he leaves, he don't, he don't want it no way.
It says factory reset of the device, doesn't mean it would be clean, that's what the action is recommended.
Which, I, I don't know, I think, uh, uh, opposed to what Mr. Burgess said, I kinda think a factory reset is supposed to wipe everything off. But, but, I believe also in today's technology, particularly with police issues, they can take a computer that you, you have deleted stuff, and be able to find stuff. They do it with, uh, uh, Homeland Security and stuff all the time. So my thing is, why is this computer so important? And it's not like, you know, I'm gone, you know, I don't.
Well, that's the same, that's the same thing we've been hearing, so let's, we can call for the question, you can vote. All those in favor signify by aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye, motion carries, thank you very much. Uh, anything else, uh, Mr. Monday?
No, sir.
But before we, uh, go into council, board, and, and commissions, for those people, for the finance staff that are still here, I wanna say thank you again. I know, uh, I know what y'all had to, to go through to, to pull all of this data together, and, and we appreciate it, I know. And you also have to do your regular jobs in addition to that, so, so thank y'all for the efforts you made on that. And for those who have left, please pass along our sincere thanks. All right, council report on boards and commissions, anybody have anything?
I'm gonna allow Mr. Monday to talk about HRPPO, because I had to got there late. In HRPDC, we had an update on the offshore wind turbines that they're building. Uh, Virginia is seen to be one of the best spots for it. Uh, it's gonna create many, many jobs in the area. Um, the, uh, metal alone in there is equal to the tonnage that goes into the aircraft carrier limits into each one. But they're talking about long-term jobs and good-paying jobs, um, and Virginia seems to be the hotspot for it. They also talked about, there was one, um, thing that they haven't tested yet, is how do these things hold up with hurricane conditions? They're very big in Europe, where they don't have hurricanes. But there's something about the turbines, Mr. Bly was explaining to me, can, will fold back or something, and should be able to work fairly well in the second. And then I let him talk about, uh, HRPDC, uh, HRTPO. Uh, we also had the audit presented for HRTPO and PDC, they had clean opinions, and everything was in good shape with them. At the jail, it was a fairly quick meeting, we did receive the audit, we had a clean opinion. There were some internal controls that needed to be strengthened, since we no longer have a finance director. Uh, that's already been resolved by bringing in somebody to help them get their books in order before the audit, and to come in about once a quarter to help keep things cleaned up, 'cause they're using a lady that's a step above bookkeeper, if you will, right now, so. And that was pretty much the jail, unless.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson had something to add to, but that was pretty much the meeting.
Yes, uh, it was. I would just like to add, it's not about the jail, but another report, um, we should be, um, very proud of our high school band. On, um, November seventeenth, uh, they participated in the, um, Norfolk Illumination Parade, which had, uh, competitions of other bands, including ODU, uh, Hampton University, Norfolk State University, um, Virginia State University College in Lebanon. I had, um, schools as far as from Woodbridge, Virginia, and local bands. And I must say, going through the parade, um, the band received, uh, cheers from start to finish, um, for playing and performing. I know 'cause I, I, I walked around with them, and it, it was fun. Uh, but they performed excellent, and, um, you'll see it, I think it comes on, um, this week, you'll be to catch the parade on television.
One thing I missed on the jail from A and, we had two surprise audits at the jail.
Oh, yeah.
By different, uh, people. Got a hundred percent on both of them, so the jail's operating very well, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Monday for HRPDC.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh.
TPO, I'm sorry.
The, um, HRTAC and the TPO, they will have a joint meeting in December that's scheduled, I think it's December thirteenth. I don't have my notes. I don't have my notes. It's going to be at 9:30 a.m. It's a public meeting. Main, main item of discussion will be the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. It's time to award the public contract on that, so the meeting's going to be held that day to discuss specifically that one item. And then, the HRPDC meeting, no real significant items to present, other than the resolution for wind. If the council wants to take a position on that, they may. And I was actually leaving that meeting a few minutes early to get back here to meet with the hospital representatives, and I was with the county officials and county delegation, and there were two wrecks within a mile of where the meetings were, and we sat in traffic for about 45 minutes. I didn't make it back from the meeting with the hospital. Nothing else to report.
We had a business center meeting I'm going to turn over to city manager.
Yes, the Franklin Business Center Advisory Board met last week. It was a special call meeting. One item of discussion was to consider a request from, what's the organization called? The Vision-
Franklin Experience.
Franklin Experience, thank you. The request was for office space in the business center. It was for 90 days originally, and then the request was amended for 12 months, to be able to use the office space there for working on that vision that that organization has. The advisory board discussed it. They looked at their past policy, their past practices, and they, they realized that the intent of the business center was for entities other than for-profits. And they did point out that two exceptions have been made to that policy. And both of those exceptions were special requests made by the city. That was Smart Beginnings, and the other organization is, help me with the name of it, Smart Beginnings, and-
Step.
Step, thank you. Thank you very much. Still learning all these pieces. But anyway, the advisory board considered each one of those from the city on a case-by-case basis, because they thought that, you know, the city was, you know, funding partner, and, you know, provides a lot of resources for this building and so forth. So, they did consider those, and they made exceptions. So, they decided at that time that they would not make a decision on the request as presented, unless the city wanted to make a recommendation. So, basically, it's, it's up to you if you wish to do that.
Well, my understanding is they've already found temporary housing. So, I think at this point in time, we probably ought to have a discussion about the business center, to, to, I guess, to clarify that point. But, but just, right now, I don't see any real pressing issue to, at this point in time.
Right. Mr. Mayor, and I think this would be a great time for me to say this as well. There is a request that has been submitted to my office for using a public asset that you control. Mr. Williams and I will talk about that a little bit later this week, and provide you with additional information, and get that request to you at the right time, so you could consider that component.
Okay. That's fine.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I have one more. And this is the Virginia Food Bank. We did a tour, and Mr. Williams helped with the tour, and Frank Davis, basically. The food bank wants to come to the area, targeting the area to enhance programs for the area, and set up stations where they can serve the public better. I'll give you another update on it later, when the process of putting a grant together that you'll get from a foundation, the money to supply that, where there'll be no cost to the city, that, for instance, the backpack program in one of our, one of our schools is up to 60. We want to enhance that to even more. The backpack program is basically where, on the weekend, children will put food packaged about the size of this in their backpack, and not knowing, the other students not knowing who's in the backpack program, and, and they use that for meals on the weekend. We are working to fight against hunger with that, and to help with nutrition programs to other agencies, daycare centers, and they work with the child centers as well. And it's a process, working with not only the Virginia Food Bank, but ODU is putting, putting the grant together, and the grant, the money will come from a foundation, and it's a process that's ongoing. But what it will do, it will enhance, for instance, if the trucks come, say, twice a month, they'll be able to come to provide protein every week and so forth, for, for our citizens, at, at no cost.
I have a question. Is this food bank the same one that does-
Correct. Same one, same one that you participate in, too. Virginia Food Bank, Food Bank.
So, they already come once a month to the armory?
Correct.
If you're able to secure this grant, they will provide food for, what, elementary school kids?
Not only elementary school kids, but for the entire area. In other words, Franklin will be getting-
And that would be four times a month, weekly? I mean, once a week?
Yes. The protein part of it would be, proteins would be four times, and you would still be able to get the right of food as well. This would be given, given to our citizens, you know, to, to help with budget and, and so forth of living.
Okay. Good. Mr. Mayor, I have one, one thing I want to say. At the meeting of the business center, I let Mr. Monday make the presentation, because I was not in attendance. I'm on the board of the Franklin Experience, and I don't have a conflict, because there's no compensation or anything involved with that at this point, but I felt it was better for me not to be in attendance, since I'm on the board. But I'm really impressed with our board on all their decision-making. They give good, solid thought to any request that comes in, and I, I just, I'm really pleased with the level of personnel that we have on that board to, to do what's right, and they give a lot of thought to it. They don't just nearly-willy make a decision. It's really a lot of discussion. I know, from what I heard, that's what went on there. I didn't hear the details, but they said they had a lot of discussion, so it's good to hear.
We have, we have a lot of citizens that are willing to give up their time and energies to help us, help the city out by serving on these boards with no compensation, and crazy meeting hours.
Mr. Burgess, I heard you guys mention the organization Step. At one point, I was approached by Mr. Kofield, who I believe is a member of Step, and they were trying to do something in regards to having an indoor facility, raise funds for an indoor facility for the kids to attach to the recreation center or something. Is that something that has been further discussed?
Further discussed by whom?
With the board, that they are seeking city funds from. Because he told me they were raising funds, but they needed the city to kick in funds to help make this a reality.
As far as I know, as far as the city-
Would I vote for it? And I gave him some of my criteria for voting for, but I was wondering, had that come before this organization that you're talking about?
It would come before us.
It would come between Parks and Rec and us.
I don't know of anything that's come to this body.
That's what they're, what he's using.
Mr. Monday raised the same. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to let you know, the only thing that I'm aware of on those regards, Mr. Kofield came in and spoke with me a couple of weeks ago. He brought his vision for the building in there, talked about the success he's had in raising funds so far. I like the enthusiasm of his project. He asked me what I thought. I told him that I thought it would be good for Franklin. I told him the challenges that I saw would be, when it comes time for a capital contribution by the city, one, I cannot commit to that. Number two, he needs to submit the request to you as soon as practical, in commensurate with your budget cycle. And number three, my personal experience has been, I challenged him to try to find a way to keep the city cost as close to zero as he could get it. Private contributions are always great. Also told him that, from a city perspective, if the city were to operate a facility like that, I know that somebody's got to pay for that. Somebody's got to insure it, somebody's got to heat and cool it, they got to maintain it, they got to staff it, they got to clean it, and everything else. I told him that those would be things that would need to be discussed, and make, make any promises, but I did hear the man's presentation. I thought it could be a good potential project, and hopefully, something like that can become a reality at an affordable price.
I was just wondering, was that one of the things that they were soliciting funds for consideration of? That's basically-
Okay.
What time are we supposed to be at the parade?
Anybody, well, I was going to, just want to remind everybody, we have the Christmas parade, which they would like our attendance, I think-
Yes.
-on the 7th of December. I think it starts at 7:00. We need to be there at 6:30-ish. Is that correct?
Sir, please.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to remind everybody. We'll send out a, we'll send out a message reminding everybody, dress warmly. We'll meet up, and we'll, we'll get a message where we need to meet, and so forth. We have the employee holiday gathering on the 14th, at the main event, at 11:30?
11:30.
11:30. That's downtown. We'll also send out a reminder to everybody about that. Elf parade, when is the elf parade?
Thursday.
Thursday before, the 6th.
The 6th, at 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. I think that's a, and we've got, we had a, I was downtown, a shop, local, you know, small shop day, whatever it was, and it was in the rain, but everybody downtown seemed to be doing, doing well, and had a good, good time.
A lot with them.
Yeah, a lot with them, okay. Anybody else have anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I moved at the Franklin City Council meeting closed session to discuss prospective candidates for employment, and to meet in consultation with legal counsel pertaining to a legal matter requiring legal advice, and pertaining to possible litigation pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, A1, and A7, and 8.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye, and nays have the same opportunity.
Aye.
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 Aye. We go into closed session. Thank y'all for coming here.